Welcome to our commission. Meeting, we call this meeting to order. It's October 6th, 2020. And what a 2020 it's been. So if I could have. Commissioner Shutey, could you leave us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
Great, thank you. And ask the clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Shutey.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
And I'm here. Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have correspondence to report?
We do. The Port of Allen sent in an amended CARES Act funding request. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: a change of corporate officers for the dab lab, a discontinued liquor license for Casper's Pizza, and a liquor license for the Hawk Shop. The Department of the Navy sent in a letter regarding a notice of availability of the Northwest Training and Testing Final Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement slash overseas environmental impact statement. The U.S. Department of the Interior slash U.S. Department of Agriculture sent in a letter regarding two historic wide-scale disasters, COVID-19 pandemic, and wildfire. And the Port of Grapeview sent in a letter regarding numerous reports of vessel speed and noise violations on the waters of Mason County within the port's jurisdiction and boundaries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4.2. A proclamation, Commissioner Shutey?
Thank you. A proclamation designating Mason County a clean energy community. Whereas Washington State continues to be a national leader in clean energy policy and recognizes the benefits for our climate, our planet, and our residents. And whereas Washington State has set a goal to be powered by 100% clean energy by 2045. And whereas Mason County receives its energy from its two operating public utility districts, Mason County PUD numbers one and three, whose fuel mixes consist of resources that are already, on average, 95 to 98% carbon-free. And whereas Mason County in the Pacific Northwest has benefited for over 80 years from the low-cost preference hydra power that makes up the majority of our public utility districts' energy resources, thus making Mason County a more affordable place to live and conduct business. And whereas Mason County intends to continue to stimulate and recruit economic development to expand the county's tax base, providing jobs and public services for Mason County families. And whereas Mason County recognizes the role that clean, affordable energy plays and the ability to effectively sustain our economy. And whereas Mason County has three privately operated small hydroelectric systems generating 26,968 megawatts of clean renewable energy over a five-year period. And whereas Mason County also has approximately 1,250 kilowatts of solar connected to the two public utility districts' power grids, which includes residential, commercial rooftop solar, self-consumed solar, and community solar arrays, in addition to six kilowatts from two privately owned residential wind projects. And whereas Mason County's two public utility districts have provided energy efficiency programs that have helped save its customers more than 23,783,206 kilowatt-hours in energy over the last decade, which equates to roughly $1.7 million in savings for Mason County residents in today's dollars. And whereas Mason County is committed to helping Washington State achieve its clean energy goals and reduce the county's overall energy consumption. And whereas the term "clean energy" encompasses many thriving business sectors, including energy efficiency, renewable energy, electric vehicles, clean fuels, energy storage, and advanced grid technologies that are critical to the health and economic growth of our county and its citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mason County pledges to collaborate with Mason County PUDs number one and three to help facilitate the permitting of rooftop solar arrays. And Mason County pledges to seek financial rebates for weatherization and energy efficiency grades when appropriate at the county-owned and leased buildings. And whereas Mason County pledges to add the consideration of electric vehicles or replacing county fleet. And whereas Mason County pledges to collaborate with Mason County PUDs number one and three to help facilitate the deployment of zero-emission vehicle-charging infrastructure. And Mason County is hereby designated as a clean energy community and shall help facilitate the installation of signs designated entrances to Mason County to highlight this designation to visitors and residents. This is the sixth day of October 2020 by the Mason County Board of Commissioners.
Perfect, thank you. And then moving on to item 4.3, we have a news release. Ask staff to come forward. Do we have Cal on here? Okay. All right, Commissioner Shutey, could you go ahead and read the news release for the Planning Advisory Commission vacancy?
Sure, just give me one second to get there.
And then Commissioner Netherland, are you able to read 4.4? Looks like Michael McSims has no audio.
Item 4.3, Mason County is seeking applications for the Mason County Planning Advisory Commission. There is one open seat represented as an at-large position. Applications will be considered from all three Mason County Commissioner districts. The Planning Advisory Commission is a seven-member citizen board appointed to advise the Board of County Commissioners on policies related to amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, Shoreline Master Program, Resource Ordinance, and other development regulations, in addition to making recommendations on rezone applications. The Commission typically meets at least once per month on the third Monday at 6:00 PM with special meetings scheduled as necessary. Appointed Commissioners normally serve a four-year term. Currently, the at-large position will be filling a vacancy set to expire in January of 2022. Applications to serve on the board are being accepted until the position is filled and should be submitted to the Mason County Commissioners 411 North Fifth Street, Shelton, Washington, 98584. Application forms may be obtained from the Commissioner's office at 360-427-9670, extension 419, or visit our website at www.co.mason.wa.us.
Great, thank you. Item 4.4, Commissioner Netherland?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mason County Historic Preservation Commission. The Mason County Commission are seeking an applicant to fill open positions on the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission. The major responsibility of the Historic Preservation Commission is to identify and actively encourage the conservation of Mason County's historic resources by initiating and maintaining a register of historic places and reviewing proposed changes to registered properties. They also work to raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources and serve as Mason County's primary source in matters of history, historic planning, and preservation. Commission members serve three-year terms and meet monthly during business hours at the county offices in Shelton. During COVID, these meetings are being held via Zoom. These new terms will run from December 2020 to November 2023. Applicants must be residents of Mason County. Interested persons are encouraged to apply for this commission by completing an advisory board form that can be downloaded from our website at http://www.co.mason.wa.us/forms/ advisory/ advisoryboardapp.pdf or by calling the Commissioner's office. Completed applicants should be submitted in the Commissioner's office, 411 North Fifth Street, Shelton. Positions are open until filled.
I believe if you have questions, you can contact Michael McSims.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number five. The time we set aside for citizen input. If you wish to address the Commission, please raise your hand. And the chair will call on you. And then please unmute yourself. And go ahead and speak. And I saw one hand. It was from Tom Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, Tom Davis, 170 West Bushy Road. I have a request that maybe you would consider during the next briefing as a point of discussion. And it has to do with the Veterans and the COVID Relief Act for utilities. As you know, the Veterans Relief Fund incorporates utilities on an emergency basis as one of the allowable funding things that they allow. So I don't know how this dovetails with that. For instance, I would love to see that if the veterans were able to access the COVID funds before, because it's their first course, before they access the Veterans Assistance Fund, it would put a little bit less pressure on that fund. And I was just wondering if that was going to be acceptable to you? Or since they have funding for that particular purpose, if you wanted veterans just to access their Veterans Assistance Program instead? And I don't expect an answer as much as I thought. Maybe you could bring that up with Jennifer and see if that would be allowable.
All right, great. In fact, we have our next meeting. Quickly on that, actually, on Thursday. And so I will add that to our list. I appreciate that, Tom. All right, do we have anyone else that would like to say anything? Or to address the Commission? All right, seeing no more hands, we'll move on to item number six, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. Moving on to item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the September 22nd, 2020 regular meeting minutes and September 28th, 2020 briefing minutes as presented.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the September 22nd, 2020 regular meeting and September 28th, 2020 briefing minutes as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, approval of the action. The action agenda. I do that almost every time. Man. I think I need more coffee. The Commissioners will read through the action agenda. Commissioners or the public can ask questions or have the item removed for a separate discussion and vote. I will read items 8.1 through 8.6. Commissioner Netherland, if you could read 8.7 through 8.13. And Commissioner Shutey, if you could read items 8.14 through 8.20. Item 8.1, approval of warrants and treasury electronic remittances. Claims Clearing Fund Warrants Number 8074716 through 8074956 in the amount of $3,077,942.70. Direct Deposit Fund Warrants Number 71506 through 71898 in the amount of $722,801.06. Salary Clearing Fund Warrants Number 705439 through 705467 in the amount of $542,561.64. Item 8.2, approval to amend the water quality contract between Hood Canal Coordinating Council and Mason County Public Health. Item 8.3, approval of contract amendment five to extend the Department of Commerce COVID outbreak emergency housing grant and community lifeline end date from September 20th or September 30th, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. Item 8.4, approval to extend the professional services contract for real estate services with Richard Beckman Realty Group, LLC, for an additional two years with the possibility of an additional two-year extension. Item 8.5, approval to set two hearings for November 3rd, 2020 at 9:15 AM to consider the 2021 Annual Construction Program and the six-year transportation improvement program, tip 2021 through 2026. Item 8.6, approval to authorize equipment rental and repair ERNR to declare the attached list of vehicles and equipment a surplus and allow ERNR to dispose of pursuant to Mason County Code and state laws and allowing the public works fleet supervisor to sign the Sourceville Multi-Channel Sales Agreement.
Madam Chair, item number 8.7 reads, approval to authorize public works to appoint a temporary solid waste attendant lead for performing duties of a higher classification. Item number 8.8, approval to authorize the Deputy Director of Utilities and Waste Management to execute a contract with parametrics to provide post landfill closure on-call services. Item number 8.9, approval to authorize public works to procure reinforced rubber snow plow blades in the amount of approximately $36,000 plus tax. Item 8.10, approval to dissolve six cash drawers in the Sheriff's Department, rescinding resolution number 48-01. Item number 8.11, approval for Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board to enter into contract K3176 and K3177 with Washington State Department of Agriculture. Item number 8.12, approval for therapeutic courts to post and hire a part-time caseworker under the SAMSHA-FRC Expansion Grant. Item number 8.13, approval to set a public hearing on November 3rd, 2020 at 9:15 AM to consider rezone of a .2 acre parcel from village commercial to residential, R2, within the Allen Urban Growth Area, UGA.
Item 8.14, approval to set a public hearing on November 3rd, 2020 at 9:15 AM to consider rezone of a 160-acre parcel from rural residential 20 to long-term commercial forest and rezone a 159.38 acre parcel from long-term commercial forest to rural residential 20 within the rural area of Mason County. Item 8.15, approval to set a public hearing on November 3rd, 2020 at 9:15 AM to consider rezone of 21.6 acres from long-term commercial forest to in-holding lands and rezone 35.6 acres from in-holding lands to long-term commercial forest within the rural area of Mason County. Item 8.16, approval to authorize the Director of Community Services to sign amendments to the consolidated contract for the duration of the COVID-19 response in order to reduce turnaround time for small contract amendments. Item 8.17, approval of professional services contract with Northwest Resources 2 for a certified peer counselor. Item 8.18, approval to enter into contract with the Department of Commerce Contract Number 21-4610C-111 for the shelter grant program and to subcontract with community lifeline to implement the shelter program. Item 8.19, approval to amend resolution 2020-70, correcting Scribner error on sale price of surplus property at 410 East Hillcrest Drive. And item 8.20, approval to amend resolution 20-56, nonrepresented salary scale range alignment by eliminating the planning manager and permit assistant center manager effective November 15th, 2020, and authorization to create, post, and fill a community development administrator at salary range 40 effective immediately.
Great, thank you. Now that we've read through today's action agenda, are there any items that you would like to be removed for a separate discussion or vote? Okay, any items to be removed by the public? Tom?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. 8.20, please, for a separate vote and a comment.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the action agenda with all items included except for item 8.20, which would be removed for a separate vote and comment.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve today's action agenda. But remove item 8.20 for such separate discussion and comment and vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Yeah, the agenda has been, or the action agenda has been approved. Now we'll move on to item 8.20. Approval to amend resolution 20-56, nonrepresented salary scale range alignment by eliminating the planning manager and permit assistant center manager effective November 15th, 2020, and authorized to create, post, and fill a community development administrator at salary range 40 effective immediately. And ask staff to come forward for discussion.
Right, Commissioner? So this position reflects, this action reflects what we've learned from COVID and the way we've been working through community development since COVID started. We have been using the planning manager since early April as de facto in this position, running both planning, building, and permitting. And the building manager has been working in a COVID response as a COVID coordinator and assistant planning chief at Area Command. So this change reflects what we've learned and have the processes we put in place since the beginning of COVID. So it really, it takes two positions, makes one management position, reaching out into the three areas of planning, building, permitting.
Okay, great. Do you, my goodness, do we have questions for staff? Yes, Tom?
Yes, there's a lot of talk about COVID in this position, but this is going to be paid, it's not going to be paid with COVID funds. Is that correct?
Correct. So this position by reducing one management position, and we've filled that and backfilled with another planner, we've expanded our planning capability. And then the money that would normally go to that difference between planning and a management position would move over to the this new position and fill that piece. So it would be essentially budget neutral.
Thank you.
All right, do we have further discussion or a motion? Oh.
The comment, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'll tell you why I brought this up, because during the initial restructuring several years ago, we eliminated the position of the Director of Community Development. And we replaced that position with a manager. And now we're taking the manager's, actually two managers' positions away. And we're bringing in an administrator position or creating an administrative position. When you read the position description, it reads just like a director. There's very little difference that I can see between the director and the administrator. It's almost as if this person is going to be running this, a great deal of this community services department. And I was just wondering, because there's another, it's not on the agenda, but there's another position just offstage up here that's relative to the Public Health Division with a pandemic response administrator. If we were starting to separate these two departments that were joined, which of course I've advocated for ever since you joined them together. But it appears through this restructuring going on, and I was wondering if that was the long-term goal, to put a little bit more space between these two departments. And I'm wondering if Dave can comment on that. Thank you.
Well, no. It's not an idea of adding more space. It's the idea of adding, using the resources we have to add more capability in the planning piece. And then what we found is, during this COVID response, we've added a number of new processes. So we have more people working from home. We have people working remotely. We've added new software. We've added new technology in order to make things more efficient. We found some efficiencies in being able to schedule things. It's just, this is part of a whole process adjustment, which was included in the briefing packet. And this has been a document that we've been working on and adjusting since June to reflect kind of the work processes. So it's not a deputy director position in that a deputy director would have authority over both public health and building planning permitting. This is an administrator that works with the building planning permitting piece and currently with the leads that are in place. And it's still in an integrated way with public health. So the other position would fall under public health as a pandemic response coordinator, as a better position. And that one would respond directly to the director, me, rather than through the public health channels, because of the way we've designed that position to work at Area Command, representing public health, and to maintain that continuity between the two things. And that one is tied to COVID funding or Foundation Public Health funding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dave. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Tom. Do we have further comment? Or discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion and I'll reserve my comments for that. I move approval of item 8.20, approval to amend resolution 20-56, nonrepresented salary scale range alignment by eliminating the planning manager and permit assistant center manager effective November 15th, 2020, and authorization to create, post, and fill a community development administrator at salary range 40 effective immediately.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item 8.20, approval to amend resolution 20-56, nonrepresented salary scale range alignment by eliminating the planning manager and permit assistant center manager effective November 15th, 2020, and authorized to create, fill, or create, post, and fill a community development administrator at salary range 40 effective immediately. Do we have further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll just make a quick comment here. You know, so we've been working on this for a number of months now. And, you know, contrary to some small-held beliefs in pockets of social media land, we are not unwilling to reassess the direction that we're heading in our departments to find efficiencies for the taxpayers and to get things moving a little bit more efficiently and effective for them. And so this is part of that process. You know, I think we've been in a combined department over there for a few years now. And we're not opposed to taking a look at how things are working over there to make sure that they're going in the right direction. So this is a response to that. As Dave mentioned, COVID did present a lot of challenges. But in those challenges, we've also had an opportunity to make some changes that we think will enhance, you know, enhance the process over there. And so we should never be afraid to step back from things and take a look at how things are working and really try to get improving process and outcomes for our constituents. And so I appreciate staff's patience as we work through this. We still have another part or two to discuss as it relates to the pandemic response position. I think there's still some disagreement about where that position is going to land. And so I appreciate staff being open to separating these two out and not, and not holding this reform that I think is really important to the upstairs operation at DCD and the planning permitting and building department to move forward. And so I'm happy to tie this up today and get moving forward on it.
Yes, Commissioner Netherland?
Yeah, Madam Chair, again, I'll be voting in support of this as well. You know, there's a lot of things that people say and can say, but when this was created, it was created for several different reasons. That the combining of them, one of them was to ensure that they work together when they were having issues working together. Another was to streamline management and to streamline our costs and to provide cost savings at a time when we were very, very much in some financial troubles. With this, we continue and will always continue to look at different options that are going to make things work and run better. that are going to make things work and run better. That's our job and it's our hope that we will always be open minded to look at what's going to be best for the community. I want to remind everybody that, you know, permitting compared to those times have doubled in some areas have even tripled. We've had to make other changes in order to absorb that. This is a streamlining of management, which I'm always supportive of. We're taking two managers down into one manager, bringing in a planner, which is more of the workers on the ground. And this is a management position that actually does work. With all that being said, you know, this is very, very positive to the community and it's already shown by the way we're structuring it now that it is effective and it is helping to bring down the, the numbers. But again, I want to remind everybody the amount of permits that are coming through now is in no way comparable to what was happening for some, four or five years ago. So again, I'll be supporting and voting in favor.
Thank you. I'd also like to comment. I think that this is the, a good move for the county. COVID, I guess you could say has, has many silver linings. And this is one of them. I, I like the restructure, the reorg. The efficiency, I think, well, and it kind of feels like we're moving into the twentieth century. So I'm pretty excited about that. All right. So now let's move on to adoption of that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, eight point two is approved. Eight point two oh zero is approved. All right, thank you. And we're going to move on to item number nine. Then other business, are, do we have any department heads or electives that would like to address the commission?
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, if Dave is still with us, I'd like maybe an update on where we stand with some of the COVID issues that we've been experiencing over the past week. I know it's been front and center here locally and of course nationally with the president's diagnosis. And so just was hoping Dave can maybe give us some updates and of course give a reminder that we all should be doing our part with masking and social distancing when and where possible and, and just give Dave a opportunity to maybe walk us through some of that.
Sure, glad to. In fact, I spent quite a bit of time yesterday out at one of our nursing homes. So I'll back up a little bit in saying that what we're seeing in trends is less in community spread and more in congregate living settings. So we've had an outbreak at one of our nursing homes. And then we've had another facility that's like a halfway house. It's had some, some spike. If you took those out of the equation, our numbers are, are looking good. So we have to really concentrate our efforts on those congregate living areas. Yesterday I worked with both DOH infection control folks and DSHS staff and went to Furlane and really went through the whole process. So we, we looked at, at the nursing home from when you walk in the front door and experience the whole thing, you go to the front door through the check in pieces and then what happens when you go to the the yellow wing. So a yellow wing would be those people who come to nursing home are sequestered for fourteen days as, as new arrivals. Make sure that they're COVID free and then they would move to general population. They're doing more testing. We worked with them yesterday on protective PPE measures and went through and really watched staff using PPE, made recommendations, a few changes and worked with them really closely. I went through the red wing with the DSHS and Department of Health. Mostly everything looked good. We've made some minor changes, but minor changes can have large effects. So that's what we're looking at yesterday. Like I said, they've gone to more frequent testing. They're testing now every five days. So we'll be getting results sooner. And some of staff is already through their, or by Thursday will be through their fourteen day period and will be coming back to work. So we've had some questions on staffing issues and we've got some PPE requests. So we'll be going out to emergency management today to pick up more PPE dropping off there. That's certainly a relevant COVID expense. The hospital came over and worked with the staff to fit tests everyone for N ninety fives. And that was greatly appreciated that the hospital staff took two of their people for two days to come over and make sure that all the PPE was appropriate and properly fit tested. So thanks very much to Mason General Hospital for doing that for us. I really appreciate that. We'll, I will be following that very closely. Obviously, that's, it's our biggest concern right now is making sure that the, the residents are safe as well as staff. And I think we have a much better communication going now. It's, it's, we're having, talking several times a day. The things they have in place makes sense. They're following guidelines. Just needed some tuning on some things. And then of course the PPE. As far as other things go, things are on our mind. As with Halloween coming up, that's a source of concern. There's some new guidelines put out by the state Halloween, and I've got a couple of community groups asking for some guidance. We're working on those. Schools are looking at a return to in-person learning. We're looking at the numbers. So the numbers, we were in the mid sixties. Our numbers are creeping back up when you take into account cases per hundred thousand and these congregate setting outbreaks have pushed our numbers back up. So we may be recommending a temporary hold and tweak those numbers back down again. And we've been reviewing school plans. The school plans look great. I mean, people have put a lot of creativity, a lot of hard work into their return to in-person learning programs. In fact, I was just going to, but the schools this morning, we looked at a couple more. Our two private schools are fully open with in-person learning. So we're watching them. They've been open for two and a half weeks now. So we'll be watching what happens there. Their plans look good. So on the whole, people are doing a lot of very positive things out in the community around COVID and we're just taking care of things as they pop up. And then again, looking forward to this, this fall, we have the possibility of a flu vaccine coming out in November. That's going to be very limited distribution. And that will be primarily run by the federal government and be pushed out to the states with some very strict adherence standards as to who will be distributing and who will be receiving the vaccine. And then we're looking at probably in January, February timeframe, a more broad release of COVID vaccines. There's five different types coming out. The first type is a very cold storage. It's an eighty degree below zero storage. So the ability to handle that is restricted by people who can handle that sort of a vaccine. Further on, the vaccines that they're proposing will have much less restricted storage components. So it will have a much broader reach as far as getting out to the general population. So a lot, just a ton of things happening in the planning stages. So we're still at the sixty ninety day out planning phase for a vaccine release. Concerns that we have are flu season, flu season, Johnny starts picking up the end of October into November. So influenza B, influenza A, and then COVID. Will all be possibly be happening at the same time. So we'll be looking at that. There is some thought for optimism in that we have people who are social distancing now and they're wearing masks. And that may actually provide for us a lighter flu season than normal. So that gives us some, some bright areas out there. And with that, that's kind of a quick nutshell, what's happening in COVID.
All right, great.
Thanks, David. I just, I kind of want to add on. So this right here is probably one of our best economic stimulus plans right here. Goldman Sachs set a mask could help save a trillion dollars in loss to our gross domestic product. The Omaha, Nebraska Chamber said of wearing mask could be as much as a three point two billion dollar economic bounce to their regional economy. And so at the risk of raising some eyebrows in Mason County, wear a mask. It's okay. We'll get through this. But if you want to see businesses and schools reopen, we all have to do our part and wearing a mask and is a big part of that. So appreciate everybody's work, Dave, in public health. So keep rocking and rolling.
Quick shout out to, to, again, our nurses and our, the rest of the health department. Everybody's working tirelessly and so dedicated to this cause. It's, there's one way we can also help with, and I agree with Commissioner Schutte. Go to our stores, support them. Wear your mask so that they can stay open. All right, any further comment, discussions? Great. Let's move on now to item number ten. Our public hearings. Let's see. So we do have public testimony. You will have an opportunity to speak during this. During the hearings, let's move on to item ten point one and ask staff to come forward.
Yes, Commissioners, this is Mike Collins, county engineer. We'll talk about the Blue Heron Condominium Association franchise application. We, the Blue Heron Condominium Association has applied for a franchise agreement with Mason County to cover their sewer transport line that was installed within the county right of ways. We're guessing probably in the early nineteen seventies. The sewer transport line is located along the east side of the Orr Nobles Road and underneath the Dolby Road. For us across a couple of private properties there. So what we're doing is we're recommending that the board approve the franchise agreement since the infrastructure is already in place and that will get them on the call out list and give us some other controlling items for that.
All right, thank you. Do we have questions for staff? No? Okay. We'll move to Commissioner deliberation or a motion?
Any public comment?
There is a public comment. I saw her head shaking.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move the, the board approve the franchise agreement application between Mason County and Blue Heron Condominium Association, granting permission to have their existing utility line under the and along the Orr Nobles Road and under and across the Dolby Road.
Second?
Motion again to approve the franchise agreement application between Mason County and Blue Heron Condominium Association, granting permission to have their existing utility line under and along Orr's Noble Road and under and across the Dolby Road. Those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Moving on to item ten point two. This is a public hearing to update the county code chapter ten point three four unmuffled compression brakes and ask staff to come forward to present.
Item two here, this is the request to modify the Mason County Code ten point three four for unmuffled compression brakes. We already have this code in in action. What we're requesting to modify is to authorize the county engineer to have the authority to post these signs wherever they're deemed necessary. And that way we don't have to go through a resolution for each one. This will make it a little more efficient and give us some flexibility to install those signs in a more efficient manner.
Okay, great. Do we have questions for staff? Do we have a public comment? Okay, seeing then. We'll move to Commissioner deliberation or a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the code changes to chapter ten point three four for unmuffled compression brakes as presented by staff.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the code changes to chapter ten point three four unmuffled compression and brakes as presented by staff. All those in favor?
Oh, hang on, I want to make a comment.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah. So first off, I just want to thank Mike for bringing this forward. And I welcome a conversation about having some signage placed on McGreevy in the area of Webb Hill. Truck traffic there has been increasing due to the Webb Hill septic facility back there. And I think it's, it's been quite disruptive for some of the folks in that area. So Mike, I hope that's a, that's an area that we can get on your list for new signage once this is adopted. So I appreciate you making these changes.
Yes, we can, we can get the specifics on locations there and, and move forward.
Great. We had some of the same issues in the Belfair UGA area, which he's already been addressing. So again, thank you for all your hard work on this. And I think this will streamline it, make it easier to get it done in the future wherever it's needed.
I think this is a great move. Appreciate staff so much. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to item ten point three, this is a public hearing to update the county code chapter twelve point two zero vacation of roads and ask staff to come forward to present.
Yes, Commissioners, this is another request to update Mason County Code chapter twelve point two zero on vacation of county roads. This issue was brought up a few months ago and, and county staff was directed to conduct a study of other counties and Jason counties to see what their methods and procedures were. What they came up with is recommending modifying our code to have three classifications of, of vacated roads. One would be class, class A where the road is considered just an easement. And that if we did vacate that road, that, that the county would be compensated up fifty percent of the assessors value. The second would be a class B and that's in a case where the county actually owns the property fee title. And so therefore we would obviously be compensated for a hundred percent of the value. The third classification is class C and that's where a road is in the timeframe of being vacated by law and we would request zero percent compensation in that situation. The other thing that we modified here is the, the current deposit for administration fee went from five hundred county staff recommended one thousand dollars now.
Now, is that as an administrative fee or as a deposit?
It's a, an administrative fee, excuse me.
Mike, one question for you on this. So is, as you know, but other folks that are listening in might not. These go through a hearings examiner process. How if all will this affect that process or how will those recommendations change potentially at the hearings examiner level as they come back to the commission?
The, you know, RCW states that basically upon a request for a vacation that the board sets a hearing date for the hearing examiner and then directs the county engineer to make a report. So at that point in time, the report would reflect what, what classification we would recommend the road to be at. And so then the hearings examiner would make their comment on, on that case. So it wouldn't change the procedure any. It's just going to add that, that element to it.
Would they, so you wouldn't, you, you, you wouldn't expect that to factor into any of the rulings that a hearings examiner might make? So for instance, without this, if it was just a cut and dry recommendation to vacate, this classification structure wouldn't factor into that part of it?
It, it should not factor into it. I think it'd be again upon the county engineer to make the report to whether there is a you know, which classification this falls within. So it would be, it should be fairly a simple process.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for staff? Do we have? So I know we, we did have some public comment that was emailed in. Mackenzie, could you let us know? Could you fill us in on that public comment?
Absolutely. Robert, a pastor from Stretch Island of Greatview emailed in. He said, included in your briefing packet is a proposed update to Mason County Code twelve point two zero vacation of roads. I believe this proposal needs further study before modification. To wit, many areas of Mason County have old plats. I speak I speak specifically for plot of Detroit two in Grapeview, which was plotted in April of eighteen ninety. My understanding is that if the platted road and avenues were not put into use by Mason County within a time specific after eighteen ninety, they automatically by operation of law were vacated to the adjacent property owner. I attached two missives I had prepared some time ago. And I do have the missives from that. One of them is June sixteenth of two thousand and ten. It says, except for the issues discussed above, the application of the non-user statute is fairly straightforward. If a street was dedicated between eighteen ninety and at least five years prior to the nineteen oh nine amendment, the statute is applicable. If the street was dedicated after nineteen oh nine or less than five years prior to the amendment, the statute does not apply. If the statute does apply, the primary question as discussed above is whether there is evidence that would support a finding that the street was opened within five years of the dedication. If the street was unopened, then the land is automatically vacated and reverts to the abutting property owners. However, it is necessary to take additional steps and file an action to quiet title in order to formalize the vacation. And then the second one was from December second nineteen ninety seven. And it says, it is now clear that the vacation is automatic. This means that these streets were deemed vacated as of eighteen ninety five. While this vested right attaches, there is nothing which creates a declaration of this as a matter of record. Consequently, it is oftentimes necessary to bring an action to quiet title. A quiet title action is brought where the rights of parties with regard to real property are contested or unclear and a declaration is needed from the court as to those rights. The effect of such an automatic vacation is the same as if you went to the local governing authority and asked them to vacate the road by ordinance. The effect is to do away with the public easement that was created by the dedication. However, the private easement is not extinguished. As is stated in one of the leading cases in this area in the state of Washington, Brown versus Olmstead forty-two W N two D two ten comma two nine nine P two D five six four in nineteen fifty-six.
Thank you. And I think also included in that was a flat net. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mike, do you have any, have you had a chance to review that, that comment? And do you have a, a response or any?
No, I, I've not seen that comment.
I believe we sent that to you last week. We sent it to Loretta.
But that, just for the record, that doesn't, that doesn't pertain to this. That vacated by operation of law is excluded on here as zero.
Correct, Commissioners. And if I may, Loretta Swanson, Mason County Public Works Director. I did speak with Mr. Pastore yesterday, I believe, and had followed up with an email the prior week. And Bob understood that this was not applicable to those properties or the fee that were vacated by operation of law. And we, we talked a bit about, his question was, well, why would we need to even make an application or pay the administrative fee if it were already vacated by operation of law? And essentially reiterated the same observations that were made in, by his attorney or the documents that he had submitted, that sometimes it is necessary to quiet title. And you can either do that outside of a county process or, or utilizing the county's vacation process. So I believe that, that he was satisfied with the, the conversation and, and what the intent for the code revisions were.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
We have other comments from our, from our public? Okay, one more time. Do we have comments or questions from our public?
Can you hear me? This is Ken.
Yes, we can hear you, Ken. Can you state your name?
Yeah. Ken Van Busker, Belfair. I did have a question for staff. I tried to raise my hand, but I guess you didn't see it. I was curious how many road vacations have been approved over the last year in Mason County?
I would, I would, I've only been here since March first, so I would guess to be about a half a dozen we've been dealing with, within the last year.
Okay, sir. Thank you. So is it all right to go ahead with my comment?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I appreciate the work that Public Works staff has put into this code update procedure. I think it's long overdue and I recommend that you adopt it. That being said, I, I have expressed concerns with the process. And I look forward to seeing those process updates. They were mentioned in the meeting materials, but they weren't included. So I'll look forward to seeing that. As you're aware, there's a pending hearings examiner matter regarding a road vacation application here in Belfair. It was submitted over a year ago. The envisioned hundred apartment development project depends almost solely on the road vacation. And if the hearings examiner recommends approval and you adopt, the del, developer is going to benefit immensely. And I would think they should be assessed accordingly. Perhaps you could consider some sort of a retroactive assessment. And that's all my comment. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right. We can move on to, is there, is there any further comment? I do not see any hands raised or any motion on the
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the code changes to chapter twelve point two zero vacation of roads with a comment.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second. Move on to Commissioner comment.
Madam Chair, if I may, I've, I've been pushing for this for, for many years. It's no secret. I, I've stood against many different road vacations because I believe that something that has value that is owned by the people, the people should get their compensation for it. Instead of gifting it, giving it away to somebody. I very much appreciate all the work that's gone on from staff to put this together. I think it is a fair way of doing business. And with that, I actually can find myself being in a position to, not always, to support vacations as long as the people got their fair share for it. So I'll be speaking, I'll be voting in favor of this.
Great.
Madam Chair, I'll just kind of echo Commissioner Netherlands' comments. And have a, just a brief thought to share with Ken as well. So I just thank Commissioner Netherlands for, you know, raising this issue earlier this year. You know, staff put a lot of work into, into doing the, into doing the research and bringing forward code revisions. You know, but, but credit Commissioner Netherlands, this was, this was, he was kind of a dog with bone on this one. And so appreciate his, his stick-to-it-iveness on this and getting us to this point. To Ken's comment, totally appreciate where you're coming from on that, Ken. I think, you know, that was one of the issues that we struggled with when we were talking about how to make this, this code revision and what it might mean. You know, and, and I, you know, I want to think through that a little bit more. I, I, I understand your point, but I have a hard time with moving the goalposts on people. You know, after they've already submitted paperwork under the, under, you know, under what they were assuming would be the, the rules of the game. And so we do have to give a little bit more thought to that. Not just in the particular case that you mentioned, but kind of how to deal with others that may still be kind of in the pipeline and how to communicate appropriately with them. You know, it'd be probably inappropriate for me to comment on specific cases that may come back before us in our quasi judicial role. But definitely something that we need to consider. But an issue I definitely, I definitely struggle with finding the right answer to.
Great. Thank you. I, I'd like to comment as well and, and thank Commissioner Netherlands. And I think that, I agree with Commissioner Schutte. This was, he's got a lot of passion for this and I understand exactly where he's coming from. It does make this more on an equal playing field and protects our, our citizens as well. So Commissioner Netherlands, thank you for doing this. And thanks to staff for their hard work as well. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And motion passes. Thank you. Move on to item number eleven, board reports and calendars. Ask Commissioner Schutte to go first, Commissioner Netherlands, and then I will follow.
Yeah, absolutely. Just looking ahead this week. Have a couple of meetings with staff the rest of today and into tomorrow. Also have the RIA fourteen watershed restoration meeting on Thursday. And the PUD Fiber Hood ribbon cutting out at Schaefer State Park that I'll be attending, as well as a state building code council meeting later this week. And then back for briefings on Monday.
Madam Chair, the last weeks, we had the Board Health Meeting, EDC, I had an EDC Legislative Committee meeting. George Blush and the members of the community asked me to get together. And so I sat down with a community lifeline to talk about some of the issues and needs that they have that I hope to bring forward here shortly in regards to projects. Joint meeting with the Squawks and Island Tribe for YWAS fourteen and fifteen. That was an interesting meeting and briefings. I had a regular YWAT fifteen meeting, Princess Regional Transportation Organization meeting. I did attend the, the Hood Canal Bridge meeting that Commissioner Schutte was on. I did not comment or nothing. And I had announced that at the meeting beforehand, just to make that clear. We have briefings, closed sessions, executive sessions, budget workshop, and I have left board meeting this morning, this next week. I will be meeting with ex-commissioner to talk about some of the issues that they have in Mason County. We have a EDC regular meeting. We have budget workshops. I have a meeting of the Gorse Coalition, Orca Finance, more budget workshop meetings. And then a regular Orca meeting that should bring us back.
Great. Thank you. Of course, we do have our EOC meetings.
Sorry.
No worries. I got you covered on all of that. We have budget meetings, courthouse security meeting, a CARES funding meeting. A, so there's also, so the Mason PUD Fiber Hood ribbon cutting, there's also a retirement celebration for Kathy Geist. We'll, we'll miss her at the Mason Transit, a DNR litigation call, Turning Point Board meeting. Friday is also our Turning Point Power of the Purse event. It's all virtual this year. So please take a look at the, the website. I am picking up some wine on Saturday. Just thought you might want to know that one. And then Monday is also Columbus Day and Indigenous People's Day, just a side note. And then I have an LTAC meeting on Monday. Every Monday, we also have a WASAC, it's called our Virtual Assembly, where some of us may attend that as well. Budget workshops. There's also a pre-weather planning meeting, so for when, for, for winter. And then more CARES funding meetings. Also Friday, the fifteenth is the great shakeout. So at ten fifteen, everybody should be preparing for the great shakeout. And then we have a Turning Point ribbon cutting for our new office in Belfair. So that's pretty exciting. And then I guess that brings us back to our briefings.
Commissioner Trask?
When is that Turning Point meeting or that Turning Point ribbon cutting?
That is on the fifteenth. That's also your birthday.
Yeah. Probably see each other at that one. And I did want to make clear, we did actually accidentally bump into each other kind of at the teen center. No discussions were had or anything like that, but we did cross paths at that moment for that drop in, in their celebration they were having.
Well, I recognized you through that mask.
Yeah. When you're as big as I am, the mask is this big. I cover all the rest of it.
Commissioner Schutte, did you have some?
Yeah, I was just going to say you have your pre-winter weather meeting coming up. Let them know that we bought new rubber plow blades today. That should mean that we should be having no snow now that we've taken that, that measure. So.
Preparing for the future, we should have, that, that should cover us. I have you know, twenty twenty, what can you say? I don't even want to predict.
I'm just waiting for the flying monkeys to come through and play a locust. That's all we're missing.
No locusts, please. I don't like grasshoppers. All right. And on that note.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second.
And we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.